All right, I'd like to call it order the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, October 26, 2016. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move we move into executive session for personnel collective bargaining or legal property acquisition issues and student issues Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512, 8, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right. for Wednesday, October 26, 2016. We will begin with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, may I have the motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried, and we will begin with board reports. Ms. Roma, you're up.
Okay, so tomorrow we have our first general meeting for SMAS, and the SMAS board and I are pretty excited because tomorrow it's going to be a little different. Usually in the past when we've held meetings, it's really been formative topics like new leadership opportunities and things like that, but tomorrow this SMAS board we're holding leadership workshops for the middle and high schoolers during the time that we're at Riken. So we're splitting up the middle school and high schoolers up into four groups, and we have four board members, so each board member will take a group, and we're focusing on two main topics. One is public speaking, and two is leadership, so just the basic skills that you should have as a leader. So the Mass website actually has a lot of workshops already made, so we just tweaked those workshops and made them our own, and then tomorrow we get to, you know, actually facilitate the workshops, and every student there will have both topics. It's just middle school and high school, you have to tailor a little bit differently, so that's why we decided to split them up, but we're really excited and hope it'll turn out well, because then if it does, we can continue this trend afterwards. And then, as part of the Superintendent's Student Leadership Advisory Council.
Slack.
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 We are planning our first Superintendent's Student Advisory Council meeting next week, and it'll be held here, and like Mr. Dr. Sorry, oh, I said doctor.
Yeah, just Mr. Smith for now.
Mr. Smith.
Working on it.
Mr. Smith said we're focusing on stress, and that was the main issue I came in wanting to focus on, because no matter, you know, who the kid is, what background they have, stress is a prevalent issue. So me and a few other students, Dr. Marr, Mr. Wyatt, and Mr. Smith have been working on how it's, how we're going to, you know, facilitate conversation, and it's a good amount of time, it's four hours, so we'll be able to get a lot of input from the forty students that are there. And then lastly, my one lunch report, I always have that. One lunch has been going well. One of the things, though, I always focus on how it has been going for the students, but I've also been trying to like look at how teachers have been using their time. So some teachers have been very generous, and even though they have duty, they've, when they're supposed to be closed, you know, they, they stay open for their kids and just say, this is the max number of kids I can have, and one teacher even put like a noise meter up, so just it couldn't go past a certain level. But some teachers, I feel, just looking around, don't, I'm not saying don't want their kids there, but they do want their quiet time, but so the issue is that when they're supposed to be open, they're closed. And that's a little bit hard for students, because a lot of times now because we have one lunch, it's very convenient, so teachers can say, you know, if a student has an assignment they have to make up, they say come during green and gold, which is what Gray Mouse calls their one lunch. But the issue is when teachers are closed during green and gold when they're supposed to be open, it's a little bit hard for students to make up that time needed. And obviously, Mr. Heibl or any principal at any school can't go around checking if every teacher's open when they are supposed to be open and closed when they are supposed to be closed, but that's one thing I've been noticing on a case-by-case basis, that some teachers do close when they're supposed to be open. But other than that, students are liking that, like I said, the break time, and it wouldn't, even though it was forced, in the sense that some of us weren't going to take a break in our eleventh and twelfth grade.
Forced you to take a break, evil.
But forcing us to take a break was probably better for our health than we realized, and now we're grateful. So yeah, thank you.
All right, well, I went to Park Hall Elementary School's Fall Festival, and I had a blast. The kids came all, you know, dressed up in their, their costumes, you know, with their, with their families, you know, especially like even like, even smaller ones came that aren't even in elementary school yet. Around like every corner, there was an activity for them, whether it was, you know, they were tossing something or, you know, throwing something, you know, trying to get in it, like say a ball, like they had like these eyeballs, you know, throw them into the bottle, and, you know, they had little prizes, but it was, you know, so well organized, and it was like every few feet was another activity for the kids. They also had, where they had like hot dogs and, and dinner, and you know, and some snacks and things like that, so the families could come in, and it was very inexpensive, could come sit down as a family and eat. Like I said, everybody looked like they were having a great time. I was having a great time, but my favorite part was going through the haunted house. And who said those, those trailers in the back, whatever they're called now?
Little cottages.
The little cottages are not useful, let me tell you. They set those zigs up for the haunted house, and it was dark, and I mean, like they had people, you know, there are volunteers in there with masks on saying float in the dark and stuff. It was the coolest thing. So, so, but greeting everyone going in and coming out scared out of their wits was Mr. Zerbiak, who is the principal, and he was, he was having a good time watching, watching all the kids, and of course, some of the adults going in there. And like I said, very well organized, a PTA, put on a great, great Fall Festival for the students, the staff there, there was a lot of staff, community, there were community people, people from the community that were there volunteering, and also Arthur Shepherd from Point of Grace Church, a lot of his church members were there participating and, and helping out with it. So like I said, it was a fun night for everyone.
All right, just a reminder, this week is Red Ribbon Week, so a lot of the schools are having different spirit days. My children have gone to school dressed very oddly this week so far, but they're enjoying it. And I'd like to congratulate all of the new members of the Chautauqua National Honor Society Arc and Dove Chapter. They were inducted last Thursday, a very excellent ceremony, lots of candles and lighting and walking around, and they did a great job, and so did all of the students that were in there, kind of as supporters to watch.
Yes, yes.
They were all very well behaved. And then also, just as an update from the last budget, or monthly budget presentation that Mrs. McCourt made, we did go, or Mr. Smith and Mrs. McCourt went before the county commissioners yesterday, and we were approved the fiscal year seventeen use of our unrestricted funds, so look for new textbooks and some more maintenance repairs in the schools in the upcoming year. So we are very grateful for, for, you know, the use of that money in that way, and that's all I have. Thank you. Mrs. Washington?
Yes. Well, I've been having a wonderful time, as usual, with the Weebolos. The Arrow of Light is the highest rank in the Cub Scouts. In order to earn this prestigious award, the Weebolo Scouts from Cub Scout Pack 561, called the Warrior Patrol of Valley Lee, invited me to speak with them at a meeting that they had on Thursday night. The purpose of the meeting was to invite an elected official to discuss their roles and responsibility in the community and learn how they came to be in office. The Weebolo Pack asked some very thoughtful questions of me. They said, what are your responsibilities? What are your thoughts on Common Core? Do you support, do you support it or not? Do you support taking away recess as a form of punishment? Why or why not? Do you think the group should be responsible for the actions of one person? How much money do you earn? What is the best part of your job and what is the worst part of your job? How many members consists of the Board of Education? And how's the student member chosen? And what does the superintendent do? Do you think we should start school after Labor Day or before Labor Day? When will the new school be built on Route Five? There's a sign already posted on the land. How can I help to make your job better? What can I do to help? I mean, they, those, and we talked, it was at least an hour of, you know, various questions, and there were many more, and it was fantastic, and it proves our students are critical thinkers. And I want to thank Jonah Kalu, who took the leadership to invite me to speak to all the Weebolo Scouts from Cub Scout Pack 561. I had a great time, and we both learned a lot. Also, thanks to the leader Cub Master Tom Jones and Assistant Den Leaders Tom Shalow and Mark Johnson, who worked diligently with these young students to shape them into productive, contributing, and respectful members of society who display impeccable character. Also, thanks to the parents, grandparents, and community members who support our scouts. Finally, a special thanks to Ruby, who came to the meeting to support her brother and the Weebolos and to learn about the Board of Education. Congratulations to the Weebolos who will become Boy Scouts in February 2017. Thank you very much.
And before you go on in, with that note, I think we also have a Boy Scout in the audience who is here working on his merit badge.
Stand up.
I'm just recognizing you, that you are also here as, as a member of a Boy Scout, see now you're all embarrassed, working on your merit badge, so he has to observe a meeting of an elected body, so welcome.
Welcome, Nicholas.
Thank you. Absolutely, thank you.
Where do you go to school, Nicholas?
Rednose.
Very good. I recently attended a meeting of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Legislative, Legislative Committee. I represent this board on that body, and we've, in the last year or so, we've started those meetings by going around and having all of the individuals who are there from various school boards across the state talk about whatever issue, especially legislative issues going on in their, in their school system and in their community. And so I found it pretty interesting to hear what everyone has to say, and the, we were discussing what the legislative platform for MAB is going to be for the coming year. They've made some tweaks to it, and I will be sharing that with you as soon as that's, that's completed. And of course, session starts in January and goes through into April, so we have, in the months leading up to that, we meet typically monthly. During the time that session is in, we're there every other week, and I also pass along to Sandra when the May Legislative Luncheon Day will be again at the Miller Senate Office Building. It's an opportunity for board members to, to go and to hear from our legislators, both delegates and senators, and, and to have one-on-one conversations with them. I find it really interesting, and, and I'm pleased because the board feels it's important, and typically, if not all of us attend, a majority of us are able to attend along with the superintendent, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Back and forth across the county, was down at Ridge Elementary School for their Unity Day last Wednesday where everybody was wearing orange, and for their anti-bullying campaign, and the entire school came out and they had little windmills, all orange windmills lined up. It was really quite a fantastic event, what a lovely, what a lovely school, what a great staff, and what fantastic students. Was at Chautauqua High School for the homecoming parade, one of three that took place that Friday night. We've had a discussion, we won't be doing that again, we won't be having three homecomings at the same time, and for the sake of the community at large. So for anybody who tried to go out to have dinner on Saturday, I am indeed sorry. Chautauqua did beat Northern, that made us all really happy, as Northern's principal is a former assistant principal from Chautauqua High School, Mr. Williams, who was in attendance, I had a wonderful time catching up with him as well, but we did win, so that's, that was very nice. We had last week the community screening of the film Chasing the Dragon, and we had pretty good turnout, well over a hundred parents, community members, and children. We also had representatives from the, from the federal level, from the state level, from the local level, law enforcement, and Anti-Drug Task Force members. If you weren't able to attend the screening, you can go onto YouTube and type in just Chasing the Dragon, and you'll be able to watch that video. It's about thirty-five, forty minutes long, it's very graphic in its content, but it is something that I urge parents particularly to watch, and watch with their children, especially their teenage children, about the incredible dangers of opioid addiction, and how it happens to the most unsuspecting, and usually it can, it can come about through, you know, just a simple prescription, and the way it can spiral from there. And unfortunately, we're not going to be able to change pharmacy companies and the availability of opioids and oxycodone, we're not going to be able to do that, but what we can do is we can make sure that we are all informed about the dangers of it. So that was really, it was a very powerful, it was a very powerful evening. We also then followed that up with a calendar committee, talking about calendar committee, talking about people coming in. We did have the parent forum where they, where we had representatives from all of the schools give us their thoughts on the calendar, and the calendar committee started its work looking at all that data and the survey that we had done online with over two thousand people commenting and giving input, and over forty parents from all the schools giving input, and we talked about all the different ways we can comply with the executive order issued by Governor Hogan, and in complying, try to do the very best that we can for our staff and our students. And so we have, we had a lot of really great input, we have another two meetings of the calendar committee before we finalize recommendations and bring them back before the board. When we bring them back before the board, of course, we'll have a very open, frank discussion about all the opportunities, and we'll have public input before we come to a final decision, so stay tuned on all of that. I did just come from the James A. Forrest Current Technology Center, from the, the group that is in the second year of the Teacher Academy of Maryland, and it's a small group of children. They were in the program last year, they, they've, they're rising and they're, and they're seniors now, and another cohort's coming in behind them, but we were coordinating their mentor opportunities that we're building for them, and we're partnering this year, particularly with the Chesapeake Public Charter School. The educational director, Ange Funia, has agreed to kind of coordinate that, and it really sprung out of friendships that the, the staff at the tech center have with the staff at the charter school, because that's kind of the professional community that we live in, and so all of these teachers talking and being excited, excited about the next generation of teachers, they're going to provide opportunities for these kids in the Teacher Academy Program to go into the school setting and do a little bit of shadowing in the classroom and see what's really going on, and really be involved in that instruction, and the charter school gives a great opportunity, because in that one site, you can see everything from K all the way up to eight. So I just want to thank Ms. Chu, who's the teacher, Ms. Johnson, who's the coordinator of the program at the tech center, Ms. Funia, the director, and the eight different teachers at the Chesapeake Public Charter School, who are going to be spending about five different opportunities with these kids to talk to them and to get them excited about teaching and the role of, of education in the future of this great nation, this great state, but most importantly, this great county. I will tell you that I, I handed out the, the salary distribution and schedule for, for living in St. Mary's County, for working with St. Mary's County Public Schools, because I know that there's no better educator than the one who comes through our system, goes off into the wider world, gets a degree, and comes back to us, as Ms. Chu is an evidenced example of. So with that, it was really, really hopeful, it was a really, really great opportunity, and when we get a little further down the path, I'm going to bring some of the kids in so they can talk to you about what they're learning in that program and, and our next generation of teachers, and with that, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Paul, a comment?
No.
Okay, all right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried, all right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to ask for approval for renewal of our Adobe contract. Meek, who we've been using for our Microsoft and Adobe arrangement, or agreements, have renewed recently their Adobe contract, and it's a, it's, it's very helpful for us, it makes our whole process of distributing software in a more uniformed, not onesie-twosies, it's a systematic approach. The agreement's going to be a three-year, there are fifty-two signed agencies that are using the, this agreement with Adobe this year for the renewal. The products, it's the Adobe Creative Cloud, it's used for, mostly for the high schools is where we have this at, and anyone that's the, as the sales rep said, anyone loosely associated supporting the high school has the ability to use this software. So these are a lot of the programs that are available to it, it's up, we can use it at the tech center as well, we use it up here at the board office, it's also used for Dr. Marr's digital media team to do a lot of their creative work. So this is the list of the packages included. So what is covered in the agreement? As I was saying, it, it covers all the high schools, the classrooms, the labs, wherever the software needs to. There is also a component that the Creative Cloud allows the staff to use it from their home devices, so it's not just on a computer, it's on iPads, it's on smartphones now, Adobe's really trying to get more of a market share. They're also going to be offering monthly webinars for our teachers, so there's, the Meek agreement really looks out for us, and it, instead of having to license and meter software, this is an agreement that makes it really easier for all of us and to utilize the software we have. The retail price, actually, if you were trying to use this Creative Cloud, it's $240 a year, so that's a nice perk for us. So the company that won the solicitation on the Meek contract is Digital Information Services, and the way the model works, it's based on thirty percent of our FTE count of staff, so it's not just the high school staff, but it's basically all of our FTEs that we report out, and you take out people who don't have access to a computer, so it will change a little bit based on our staffing patterns, but for this year, over a ten-month period, the cost is twenty-four thousand, but as I noted in the motion, it's probably going to be about twenty-nine thousand if the things stay the same in future years. I can answer any questions at this time?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, so you're saying that it, this is what I wasn't sure of, are you paying per account, or you said it's thirty percent of the FTE, so it doesn't matter how many students are using it, it's just thirty percent?
No, no, it's based on the, the staffing, that's how they work their agreement out. Microsoft does it more on the student count, so that's just the way that Adobe worked it out with Meek.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I don't have any questions, thank you very much.
No questions, thank you.
I'm really excited by the number of products that are covered by this and the accessibility for staff outside of, of the classroom, so, you know, very well done.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? I don't have Dan here, someone jump in.
I move, I moved that the Board of Education approve the three-year Adobe Enterprise Term License Agreement under the Meek Educational Consortium for the purchase of Adobe Creative Cloud software applications to Digital Information Services at a cost for FY 2017 prorated for a ten-month period in the amount of $24,090.48. That the board further authorizes continued use of this contract for fiscal years 2018 and 2019 at an annual cost of $28,909.75 for a full twelve-month term each year at the contract rate of $49.25 per license.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Michelle Glantwall and Ms. Mayo.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. Okay, good evening. Vicki and I are here tonight to get approval to purchase some novels for middle and high school from one vendor, which is Everbind Books. When we transitioned to the Common Core state standards four years ago, going on five, we did experience a lot of instructional shifts, and one of them, or two of them are here, so there is an emphasis on extended text, so we found ourselves in a position where we had to buy a lot more novels, literature and nonfiction, to support this, this movement, this change, and these texts had to be more complex, so they needed to be at the right grade level, so we have been slowly, over the last couple of years, purchasing books to support these two initiatives with the Common Core in middle school and high school. So so far, what we've done, we've bought supplemental reading materials for grades six to twelve that are more complex for each grade level. We've also purchased whole-class books for the accelerated and pre-AP courses, it's a new curriculum that we've had in place for going on three years, and we've also purchased whole-class and independent reading materials for reluctant readers. So we've slowly been building our repertoire and our, and are filling up our bookrooms over the past couple of years. So currently, this is what we're looking at with Everbind, here's a couple examples of some titles that we're looking to purchase. It's a pretty big number, almost four thousand books. So the first grouping here, these are all nonfiction, they're pretty current, new, they're, most of them were one Maryland, one book, and they're very high interest, so, and it's nonfiction, which is another area where we're really looking to get more titles, because we have a lot of literature, but not so much nonfiction. The middle grouping, Fahrenheit 451, To Kill a Mockingbird, Kite Runner, these are to support the pre-AP and the accelerated, those are, those are all high school books. And then the last grouping, we have three middle schools, Esperanza, Lenartown, and Margaret Brent, that are implementing a pilot of whole novels for the whole class, and those are really geared toward reluctant readers, it's just a process of reading the whole book at one time, kind of like you would watch a movie at one time, instead of reading little bits and stopping and talking, reading little bits and stuff, so they get the whole picture, and a big component of that is really engaging, high-interest text. So we added a lot of those titles this summer through the novel approval committee, so those are some titles that schools have requested.
And this one book you have, The Immortal Life of Henry Adelax?
Uh-huh.
That's a really good book.
It is.
I read it, and the setting is in Maryland.
It is.
At Johns Hopkins Hospital, so it'd be really good for STEM students or any students.
Absolutely.
It's a really good book.
So the current purchase would provide additional copies of extended supplemental reading materials for the accelerated for the accelerated AP courses, so that we do have enough for individual students. Last year, we did purchase a lot of class sets. We wanted to make sure that we had the right books that we really wanted. And so we want to finish purchasing them this year, so that we can send copies home with every student. And we also want to support that whole novel for the whole class, for books for reluctant and struggling readers, so that they have access to more current, multicultural, engaging reading. So do you guys have any questions?
One of my questions was pertaining to, it was the slide you showed with some of the books.
Okay.
If there are already books in the county that teachers only use for like a month, is there any way, instead of buying that new book, like The Immortal Life of Henry Alexander, ironically, our STEM class just finished reading that. And we, we took a month reading it, and now we're not going to touch it for the rest of the year. So is there any way to circulate the books that we already have instead of getting?
We can do that, and schools do do that. Their department chairs are very good about sharing books. But it's difficult when, with planning, you know, a lot of teachers, because we do have units that follow a specific order. So a lot of teachers are teaching the same text at the same time. So it is very challenging. We have been able to do it, to make it work. But on a whole, we don't really have a good system for routing books and moving them around. It's, it's difficult. But we could. I mean, it's not out of the realm of possibility.
And then how are the books that were needed chosen? Was it just a case-by-case basis? Or, because I know you said you've got it approved from the novel committee, but just the books in particular, was there? I know you said the three groupings, but within the groupings, why were those particular books chosen?
It really depended on the school. All of the books did come from the approved list. And the pre-AP and accelerated curriculum is a little more consistent. All the schools are teaching the same titles. And the whole novel for the whole class, this, the teachers chose books based on their student populations, ones that they thought.
So it was a teacher?
Yes. It was a team decision. Mm-hmm.
That makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I have several questions. Have you read these books?
I've read a lot of them. Yeah.
Okay. And, okay, and did you have parent parental input on any of the, this list or supplemental reading?
We, well, we had, for the novel committee this summer, we did have a parent that was on that novel committee. But a lot of the titles, well, not a lot, but most of the titles that are, were purchasing are, have been on the approved list for a number of years. Some of them are newer.
Okay. So what I question is the one book. It's called Copper Sun. Okay. So middle school, which this would be going to, it would be Margaret Brent, and I think Esperanza was the other one.
Right.
Because not all the schools had the same list.
Correct.
Okay. The age for that is, they suggested age is fifteen. And middle school is normally ages eleven through fourteen. The other thing that I question too is the content, especially for, you're saying, struggling readers or those to get interested. Because the educational value and, and every site that I went to had like this big thing on there to make sure that parents knew about the violence and the sex in the book. That's why I want to know if this went through the parents, you know, if parents had, were able to look at this. Because it says, women are repeatedly and systematically raped. There are hundreds of deaths, and then a shark attack, beatings, murders. Okay. The violence of the African slave trade is detailed and horrific. Then sex, men fondle female slaves, and adultery is discussed. So I really questioned the use of that book and maybe, I'm not sure what the teacher was looking at or that committee at that school was looking at as far as an objective, what objective they're trying to complete with the core curriculum. But, you know, maybe some other books might satisfy, if you're looking at, going back and looking at slavery, something without such graphic detail. The other one here, and I just randomly picked a couple of books, the uglies, okay? The only thing in here, it says about the gruesome details of an operation are described. Now, you know, like I said, once again, is there something that could have been chosen that would have satisfied whatever objective the teacher was looking at? I haven't read these books, but I went through, like I said, just to find like the summary of the book and, you know, the different ratings, age group, what it's appropriate for. So, you know, for me, I think that before we go and buy these books, that the parents really should be given a list and looked at, you know, look at this before we get a complaint, which sometimes we do, that it serves explicit sexual content or whatever is in this, you know, these books that are being sent home. So, you know, I, like I said, I, even though it's on an approved list, you know, who approved this list? And if it's been on the list for years, are these people now gone that approved the list? Then the other thing too is I know that you do not have to, where is it? Wrote it out. It said, for materials of instruction are exempt from competitive bid process. But I just looked at the one book, the Malcolm X book, and I'm just, it's, because you all are getting paperback, free shipping, same as this. And it was $10.19 that you were purchasing it for. And here I found it for $5.21 on Amazon. So, and Barnes and Noble. So I know that there's going to be like different rates for different books. I don't know who's owing your list of being able to purchase from. You know, I didn't have that either. But sometimes it might be good to go and look and see, because that's a difference of $174.30 on one book.
The books actually are not paperback.
None of these. They're Everbind. That's the, that's the.
Right. They're school-bound, hardbound books.
That's Everbind only produces.
And we did a free price.
Then that's good. That's good. Because it just said, because every once in a while you have, it's on here, it's hardcover from the publisher, non-returnable. So to me, that meant that the other ones were not.
Well, the way Everbind works, they purchase books from publishers and then rebind them using their binding process. But the, some of the newer books, they are not able to do that. So they had to purchase them right from, it was about publishing rights. They weren't able to do that. So it had something to do with that. And it's only, there was only a couple of titles, because they're, they're very new. Like I think Brown Girl Dreaming was one. And they're, because they're very new.
Okay. So that's why it says hardcover from the publisher.
Right.
And most of the books, we were able to get three-price quotes for.
Okay. All right. So my thing is, is I, I think that before we go and purchase these, that the parents really need to see what their students are going to be coming home with, and are there other choices?
And we always offer choice. We always offer choice when it comes to independent reading.
At home, they're going to put on there, please make sure that before your student reads this, this is a lot of sexually explicit material, or it's very violent, please let us know if you have a problem with it. So teachers are going to be sending that home, because.
Very possibly, yeah. It depends on how it's being used, but.
Okay. Because I'm going to tell you, in the past, my son came home with a book in middle school, and I was not happy. And I was right in there saying, this is not appropriate. Okay? So I think that before the students are sent home with, you know, what might be appropriate to me might not be appropriate to someone else. So I really believe that before any of these books go home, there needs to be a disclaimer for these parents to have a choice.
Okay.
Roma, do you have some?
I was going to say that most, most teachers do, especially in high school, as you start reading. Like we were doing a banned book project in ninth grade. So there was content in the, banned books, like it was banned in another state. Yeah. So, sorry. But the teacher made sure that we, we gave like a, it had a summary to our parent, like what contents in this book that, that made it banned somewhere else. And then our parents could decide if they wanted us reading it.
But that might be an, right. So that might be an exception. This did not happen with my son.
Well, I know, so in, I know at least at Margaret Brent, for the, for the reading programs, as you move up into each grade, at the end of the year, and it started when my daughter was in fifth grade, they sent home the list of the books that she would be reading in her language arts class the following year. So, and, and there, so you could go on, and I did the same thing you did. I went on to Amazon and, you know, looked at the content of the books. There was one that I was not so excited about. I did talk to Mr. Smith about it, and then I did actually email her language arts teacher, you know, outlining what my concerns were. And, you know, she told me how the book would be handled in class, what the discussions were going to be. And, you know, from my conversations with my daughter, I think it was a very good learning experience for her. And I think the challenge that, and you bring up a good point, I think the challenge that we have is that as we are pushing the students through, and this is what Mr. Smith and I talked about with a lot of these accelerated reading texts, a lot of the texts that the children are now reading when they are in middle school, especially in the accelerated program, were former high school books. And I think there is a difficulty in finding age-appropriate books at that level for a seventh, you know, for a sixth or seventh grader. So.
And it's not only age-appropriate, but it's also.
Content.
Maturity.
Right.
Yeah. But I mean, so part of this program and part of the push-in is to put in front of children high-interest, compelling texts that they're going to be thought-provoking. And so, and, you know, we can do the entire works of Charles Dickens, and it'll give us text complexity at an appropriate level. But the kids, you know, you don't, they're not going to necessarily engage with it. With The Copper Sun, are we currently using that text? Is that, or that, that novel? I mean, all three highs, all three middle schools have identified it as something that they're interested in teaching. And it is.
No, it was only two of them.
I did read that one at the summer. That is one of the ones that I did read.
Right. So, I mean, that, that is in the request. That is in the purchase. That is one of the issues. And obviously, the reason why they wanted to bring it in is because it's a compel, I haven't read it.
That's very compelling.
It's, you know, it's compelling. And it's talking about the horrors of the slave trade, which it's hard, it's hard to make that not be off-putting to civilized society. That being said, it is part of the history of the United States and of the larger world. And so I know that when I was an English teacher, we had very similar, very active conversations about a majority of the works by Toni Morrison. And that Toni Morrison, beloved in Song of Solomon, wrote about the horrors of slavery and talked about sex and rape and violence. And it was, it was part, you know, it was, it's, it's part of the AP curriculum. It's part of college curriculum. It's part of the learning process. And when I presented it as a teacher, and then also as the department chair talked about it, we always said, we offer alternatives to children, to parents who feel strongly that your child shouldn't be interacting, you don't want them reading this kind of material. And then we draw them to traditional European classics, you know, and, and they could, they could get that experience.
I guess my concern is, this is middle school, and you have like an eleven-year-old or a twelve-year-old versus a high school student. So I think that there's, you know, there's a difference there.
And I don't know the grade level at which this is being proposed as a whole group set.
Because it says, really, the eighth.
It's an eighth grade.
And it's, and it says eighth grade. And then also in other places, it says it's a, it's a fourteen to fifteen-year-old.
Because on here, it does not say this is being presented to eighth grade. It just says Lenartown Middle School.
Right. I mean, you're just looking at a purchaser. We didn't know we were going to be talking about individual texts. If we want to go back and talk about individual texts, then, then I think we probably need to, to bring this back around and, and talk about the whole process for how, I mean, how many books did we read this summer? You had quite a, quite a group of readers, because what we're trying to do is present to students high-interest texts that are, you know, expository as well as fiction, as well, so we're trying, as well as technical. And so we are, we're probably, as we branch out, we probably are going to find things that are, that are, that perhaps aren't comfortable. And so if you would like, we could, we could, we could shovel this. We could bring this back around. We could talk through. I mean, the purchaser did this before you, and the board action is for the entirety of over three thousand books.
Right. And I guess my other thing too is, I want to make sure, like you're saying in your example, that the teacher said there, this is a summary. In my case with my son, the teacher did not say anything. So I really think that if you are, you know, in charge of this area, that this needs to be standard across the board for, you know, this is the list of books that we will be reading. This is kind of a summary, a content, you know, just like what I did and looked these things up, that every teacher does it, not just maybe one that thinks, you know, like Roma's teacher, you know, did that, because my sons did not.
But it's my understanding that within the public schools, as they currently are in St. Mary's County, that any teacher who presents a text and is told by a parent that their child is not to read it, they are offered an alternative. And if they are not, please contact the Board of Education. We'll go back with that teacher and make sure that we are consistently doing what we say we are doing publicly, which is offering an alternative. If a parent comes forward and says they disapprove of the text. Now, to be fair, we have people who disprove of all kinds of texts, not just simply ones that are related to the slave trade or what have you there. And for all of them, we accommodate with alternative assignments. And if we are not, people need to tell us. I can only change what we're doing now. So if that's currently the, the, happening in any of our schools, and please contact the Board of Education.
No, I understand that when it, when a parent, because I did go and he was given an alternative, but they started reading it in class. So that is what I'm saying, is that the teacher, you know, just send home the list and say, look, you know, this is what we're doing. This is a summary of it. That's what I'm asking.
You want the opportunity to weigh in before the student receives the book or before they get into it.
I mean, I don't think it's that hard for them to send home a list and say, you know, this is a summary. This is, you know, just a little bit about each book. And if there's any controversial issue, that they, you know, just put that on. That's all I'm asking, because they will start reading this book in class or giving it to, and how many other kids come home and they're up, they unpack their bag up in their room or wherever, and they're sitting down to read. And you, you know, oh, I'm, you know, I'm working on my homework. Well, you don't know what they're reading. So.
I mean, we do, we do have our English teachers provide syllabus at the beginning of each year that gives a full breakdown of all the materials that's going to be there, that will be covered throughout the year. I mean, they're, I mean, that's practice. So this shouldn't.
Okay. Well, it's, it's, they're buying them now. So did they have it, do they have it on their list that's gone out? I mean, I don't know. I'm asking these things.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't.
It's common practice, but.
Yeah. I think it's been explained, because it seemed like we may get over and crossing in the area of censorship. We do have a system in place and that if the parent is uncomfortable with the reading material, they will know in advance, and they can choose another text.
Right. I understand all that.
I know. So it is a process in place, and you want to make sure it's being followed. Right?
Well, I just know what it is, is I want to make sure, I guess, if you're sending something home at the beginning of the year, I guess, like, I don't know how more clear I can make this, you know, just send it home at the beginning of the year with these lists, you know, on it and a little bit about each. But you're buying it in midstream. So was this already on the list, you know?
Well, I, so I think, I think you have two issues. Number one, I think the issue is how we are selecting the books, specifically based on the content and the warnings of the material that might be in the books. Is that correct?
Right. What we're doing is we're looking to approved, celebrated texts that are appropriately geared towards children. Then we are putting together reading groups of professional educators to read the books. They're reading them over the summer. They're writing summaries and sharing them. We're specifically going back to the individual schools, the middle schools, where all the reading language arts teachers are getting together to talk about what they would believe would be a high-interest and appropriate text. They would like to do whole-group reading. They're discussing with each other. We're assuming that they're all familiar with the books. And then from that, they're coming to the supervisor of secondary English to say, here's a list of the books that we'd be interested in purchasing, so that we can bring back to the class. What we can do is we can make sure, because these are being purchased now, and they haven't been delivered. So I don't know the extent to which that has been shared with parents, that here are the, here are the selected full-text. so I don't know the extent to which that has been shared with parents that here are the, here are the selected full-text reading. We can go back and take a look at that.
So, for, for Mrs. Weaver, I think there's two issues. Number one, on the process to select the book based on the content that you saw on the few that you pulled out. That's, that's number one. And then number two is the notification of the parents, you know, I mean, I mean, I can tell you I know it's happening at Margaret Brent, because I've had it now two years running, so, and I don't think they're not going to do it next year. So, I mean, that, that's one of the four middle schools, and so, so tho, those are the two main issues that you have right now.
Correct.
Okay. So, with that all being said, um, because this, this recor, this motion is specific for the purchase of these books that are listed on here at these prices. So, okay, Roma, do you have something else? Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, you were talking about how these books are geared towards accelerated and pre-AP students?
Some are.
Some are, some are. So, um, uh, I, if students take the AP exam in eleventh or twelfth grade, especially twelfth grade, um, this was just a particular issue that we had ninth grade. There's, um, an essay, and it takes up a good portion of the score, that they give you like a list of books. And, um, uh, and you just, they give you a prompt, and you answer the question based on the books that are, you pick a book there and answer the prompt based on that. So, um, in ninth grade, like, our teacher was giving us books that were specific to that list so that she'd make sure, are, just out of curiosity, are the ones that, um, are geared towards accelerated and pre-AP, are they on that list, or are they, um, will they be helpful for kids who are interested in taking the higher-level AP classes?
Yes, absolutely. I would say probably ninety percent of them. That was one of our criteria that we looked at when we put that curriculum together too, because we wanted to expose students to as many novels as we could in that pathway, knowing that they needed exposure so they could choose more than just the, you know, seven books that they actually got to read in AP literature.
I just want to make sure, because sometimes it is teacher by teacher. There are standard books that just, they're classics, and the teachers do, but there are, um, handfuls of times where students, their teachers didn't focus on those books, so when they come to the exam, they see that they, so I just wanted to make sure that that was...
Yes, it absolutely is. Yeah, and we've identified it on the, um, except the whole vertical curriculum. They are tagged as books that have been cited several times in the AP literature assessment.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I guess my other, other thing, you said you had one parent on the committee. It, it might be good to have even a variety of people on there, including more parents. Um, you know, to go through and say, you know, "This is what, like, say, you know, my older son was interested in, and maybe we could look at that." But, you know, I, I just think that just going by a novel, you know, something that's been approved for the last how many years, um, might not be in the best interest. Especially, you know, like, you're trying to have it, have an objective geared, geared toward the common core. So, you know, I, I just, I just think that there's sometimes better choices and things that could also spark interest that don't have to be so graphic in whatever content it is, whether it's, you know, describing, let's say, a murder or describing an operation or, you know, you know, something like that, that you can get the same point across and still have an eye, high interest.
I understand, I understand your concerns, I, I do.
Do you, are there, for the two books that you mentioned, I know one was The Copper Sun, I don't remember the other one. I assume that there are alternative texts for that, for that book that are on the list somewhere.
Right, their choices, pretty much any novel a teacher chooses, they are teacher choice. Um, and then, if, again, like Mr. Smith said, if a parent objects, we, we always offer an alternative.
Parent, if the child objects, I mean, it, it's, you know...
But I just think it should be ahead of time, because that's not what happened in my case.
I mean, personally, for me as a parent, I'm comfortable with the process, because I, I've gone through it, and I, I had a concern with the book, you know, over the summer, and, you know, and the, the way that the book was taught and handled, I think was very well done based on the content, you know, that they were reading. And that was, you know, that was a seventh-grade accelerated class. And, and I think it was very well done by, by the instructor, you know, and the projects that, that came out of that book. And I think, you know, my daughter didn't like the book, but, you know, she understands it, and I think has a more, and it wasn't, you know, it wasn't just, it was a text, it was more of a, you know, it was, it was an event.
It was the Holocaust, it was nice, it was, you know, the gentleman, it just passed away.
Right.
And, uh, yeah, the same thing. I mean, I, we spent a lot of time talking about that, and that was...
That's a good book.
Right, written by a survivor of the Holocaust. And it is deeply unsettling what the, you know, what, what's in the text. But then we also follow it up with a visitation to the Holocaust Museum, which is deeply unsettling when you see man's inhumanity to man.
But, I mean, but they also, they used movies, and they used other, you know, accounts, you know, and so I think, I think it was, it was, it was very well handled in, you know, in, in that classroom, so...
And a lot of the historical novels are taught in tandem with social studies. So, social studies teachers are teaching a lot of the history and background, right. And Copper Sun would be one of those, it's in, you know, it takes place, it's part of the eighth-grade social studies curriculum.
Yes.
Especially ninth grade, because that's when you're taking U.S. history. So, that's when everything seemed to align for us in terms of characteristics.
Right, okay, okay.
Do you guys, Mary, have anything?
I'm comfortable with your process. If a parent or a student is not comfortable with the book that is selected, they have a choice. The book is not forced down their throat. Um, historical novels are not always comfortable to read, but it's the truth. Slavery was horrific, the Holocaust was horrific. The way Native Americans were treated, that was horrific. But, we need to know the truth, because the truth will set us free. And we can learn from that, that we don't want things like that to happen again. Yeah, it was brutal, those things were bad, but we're, we're trying to improve as a nation so we don't let things like that happen again, or any form thereof. The, for example, the Book of Song of Solomon's, um, by Toni Morrison. There were people that protested that book. I read the book, the book was complex. And I said, "If our students can understand this, they're good." Because I had to put notes in the margin of my book and everything. And the part that people took out of context was one paragraph in that whole book. And when I read the book, I read right through it, and maybe twenty-five pages later, I said, "Oh, that's what they were talking about?" I, I couldn't believe it. And our teachers are excellent teachers, and they know how to teach it, to put it in the right context to deal with our students. Our students...
I said, "Not all."
Well, if teachers aren't teaching up to standards, then they put them on a plan of assistance. Um, I, like I say, I'm satisfied with the process. I have not read the book Copper, what is it called?
Copper Sun.
I have not read that one.
We'll be getting copies through the board.
Well, I, well, just like, just like the Toni Morrison book.
We all got, right, we all got, we basically, we had a, we had a book study.
I wanted to know what was the fuss about, so I read that book.
I have another...
Uh, but...
I was going to say, the stack is growing.
Right, they're, they're currently reading four other books, the, all the A and S selections for teaching and grading and teaching.
There's more than that.
All right, there's another, yeah, there's, yeah.
Anyway, um, Mrs. Weaver, it seemed like what I'm understanding her to say is she wants the parents to be informed in advance of the book that will be read before the students bring it home in their backpack. And if the parent have an objection, they can be given another choice. And that's what I've known us to do, ever since I've been on the board. And maybe somebody, it slipped through the cracks with a particular teacher, I don't know, but I think that can be corrected. Um, and, you know, we need to move on, we have to meet the standards. The complexity of the reading is increasing, and those books meet certain parameters that they're going to need in, in life.
Well, and the best part is, as Ms. Bailey referred, uh, the county commissioners have approved our use of fund balance to move into this current budget to spend two million dollars on a textbook adoption. And an integral part of the textbook adoption is to review all the text within, all the related materials, how it incorporates all of these things. So, and that is a very collaborative, open process with teachers and community members and parents. Uh, and even students, go figure, um, and so we can't wait to embark on that. We're going to be so familiar with one another, Miss Galant-Wall, and so, so, yay, yay, we all need to, we all need to... I've just, I've just bumped up, these are now two-point-five magnifications, so I'm, I'm ready for my reading, so we're good to go. Going blind slowly.
Oh, get your copy of Copper Sun.
I am blind, so if I look up, my eyes look really big, that's, because they're two-point-fives.
All right. Ms. Washington, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, uh, I think, you know, if, if we need to go back around and just sort of ensure that, um, that principals and, and appropriate staff understand that we're interested in the consistency in ensuring that, um, parents have due notice. Um, the, do we have an understanding, I mean, in the time that Mrs. Washington and I've been on the board, and I hate to keep going back to the, I feel like I'm an old fart. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I call you a dinosaur, right?
We've been together this whole time, so, uh, here we are.
I'm the dinosaur. Um, I mean, we have not had an, uh, an appreciable number of, of parents coming to us. In fact, I, I really can't think of anybody who's, who's come to the board to say, "There's a problem with this." Um, but are there any things that are kept in terms of, um, information on how many parents or how many students request, at any particular level, request alternative, um, options to, um, materials such as these?
Not in any formal way. I know poor Tracy Hyble is, maybe fields that, um, in her office. But, and I, I know just kind of anecdotally, some of the texts that parents tend to ask for, um, alternative texts.
Okay.
But nothing that's formal that comes to me that I keep track of. Though, we do keep track of all of the, um, review forums from the Novel Review Committee, so if a book is denied and not approved, we have documentation of why, what it was about it, um, at that level. So I do have all of that, that goes, oh my gosh, it goes back to like, I don't know, ninety-seven. I have a big giant binder that Sylvia Rivers left me.
Right, because the other side of it is, when we don't approve a text that's on an approved list, people who are very supportive of that text want to know why we aren't moving it forward and claim censorship on our part.
Okay.
Exactly.
And, um, in terms of the Novel Committee, just in general terms, um, kind of who's on that committee? I mean, are we talking teachers across all the high schools and middle schools? Or, so talk a little bit more about who's on the Novel Committee, and then also, um, just a bit about what criteria they use to determine what's appropriate and, and what they're looking for.
Okay, um, the Novel Review Committee had teachers from all grade level six to twelve. We had a couple of administrators, um, we had, there were three administrators, and then we had a parent. We did reach out to several parents, and we had one that was willing to work with us in the summer. It's, it is very time-consuming, and it's a lot of reading and a lot of meetings to review books. Um, and the Novel Review Form has several different pieces to it, but it does have to have literary merit. It has to have instructional merit and value. Um, and we also made recommendations, where would it fit in our curriculum? So we didn't just pick them, depict them. So we had certain units in mind or certain grade levels in mind, and then the committee decides at which grade level it is most appropriate. Um, and it requires two people who will have read it and completed the form, and they pretty much lead the discussion on, on the, the top, the title. And then the, the committee decides whether or not they want to approve it. And so we had a lot of conversation about quite a few books, and not everything made it. There were quite a few titles that we just didn't think had that merit.
Um, I, you know, I think, um, as, as curriculum has been pushed down in the way that it has, um, I think we're confronting this more frequently. Um, just in terms of the challenge we put in front of students. Um, and, and I, I know we're sensitive to, uh, the concerns, and we're sensitive to the parents and the students who determine that they're not comfortable with this book. Um, my experience is through not only my kids, but, but a lot of their friends talking about the fact that, um, they do understand that if there's something they're not comfortable with, that they have the option of, of going forward and making a request that they read something else. Um, like Mrs. Bailey's daughter, um, my kids were not always pleased with some of the things they had to read for a variety of reasons, and a lot of it was the interest, or they were, you know, they, they didn't necessarily like being confronted by some of the realities. Um, and so, it was a, it was a good time for us to have conversations about, um, a lot of these topics. And, um, I know that the training of teachers is to present these things in a sensitive manner when, when it is a sensitive subject. Um, you know, kind of my hallmark is, um, are we giving adequate notice? Are we, um, do we have appropriate texts that are options for students? Um, is the material being handled in a sensitive way? And are these good representative samples that are going to prepare the students for, um, for what they're building to? And, um, and my understanding at least is that, um, we, we are there. Um, you know, there's, there's always room for improvement, but, you know, I, I think, um, by and large, um, we're, we're, we're there. Um, there's never, I don't know that there's ever going to be a hundred percent, um, it, it's human nature. And, um, but where we know there are issues, then, then, you know, we double back and make sure that it, it's being covered. Um, I, you know, I, I, I think I can move forward with this with the answers that you've provided. Um, I appreciate the fact that you're working to ensure that, that, um, we are reaching out to parents at various levels. Um, it is a lot of work, uh, to ask them to review some of these things. Um, and, and certainly grateful to the parent who, who did volunteer to be a part of that and, um, and was there. So, um, you know, the, the simple fact is, students are reading more complex texts. Um, and, and it is not done in a vacuum. Um, and I want them to be prepared, and if we're going to prepare them, then this is a reality of how they're, they're being prepared, so. I, I'm okay moving forward with this. I think you've given, at least for me, you've given the answers that I, that I needed to be able to move forward.
And to Ms. Galant-Wall's defense, um, if the board so wishes a review of how we're going through all, you know, the, the Novel Selection Committee process and all of that, we can bring that back before the board. And if the board wants summaries of the novels themselves and the review of the people who've read them, we can, we can make that available as well. We just, we weren't aware, we, you know, for our, for our purposes, I, we believe we're coming for a straightforward purchase for thirty-eight, thirty-some-hundred. We thought the, the largest question was calling him books as opposed to extended, um, supplemental reading materials. Why not just call them books?
And I, and I actually have a couple other questions, or just, um, so on the, on the, um, the price, or not the prices, but the, um, the totals, um, there, there seems to be a fair disparity in the amount of money each particular school will be receiving in the, in the form of books. I was particularly struck by the fact that Esperanza, Leonardtown Middle, and Margaret Brent are all over seven thousand dollars a school, and yet Spring Ridge is at twenty-eight-hundred, just shy of twenty-nine-hundred. Um, Great Mills at nine thou, over nine thousand, with Chopticon at a low of forty-six-hundred. Can you shed some light on the disparity in...
Yes, I absolutely can. Because we've been purchasing them over a couple of years, their, their book rims vary. Um, so this was school request, this is what they requested to finish out what they had started. So there were disparities in the other two years as well, just based on where the schools were, what they were ready to teach, what they felt they needed to, um, to supplement what they already had. So Spring Ridge is in a pretty good position. They also, I don't know if you know Marissa Kincaid, but when she was there, she was very, um, successful in getting a lot of books through their own school MOI. So they had, they have a really strong inventory that they didn't need support, um, at this level. So that, that, those two reasons combined would be why.
And I would also make the observation that I think, um, often students who are in accelerated or pre-AP um, are accustomed to reading, um, more complex volumes, and, um, and I, you know, they're, they seem to be, I, I, I've been impressed by their maturity.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, you know, again, not a hundred percent... And, you know, again, not 100 percent, but, but I think that's also reflective of, of their ability to, to understand these novels as they're going forward. So, all right, you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, then I'm seeking a motion on this recommended action item.
I move that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County approved a one-time purchase of extended supplemental reading materials from Everbuying Macro Book Company for the middle schools listed in the amount of $22,760, which brings the total purchase for these materials of instruction for the middle and high schools to $46,179.10, when combined with the initial orders that were already placed earlier, earlier this month, in the amount of $23,419.10. Additional titles and quantities may be purchased on an as-needed basis as funding permits for the remainder of the fiscal year.
For a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rebecca Klein.
Hello, I'm not sure where I am supposed to find this PowerPoint that I emailed to you.
Oh, don't worry, assistance is coming.
To me?
Yes, you're going to help her, find them. Close that out.
But you emailed it to me?
I have it on my computer.
Well, this is not your computer. That's going to be a challenge.
Okay, well, I can just log into Google real quick and get it off my email, if you'd like. Or I can just talk. I'm pretty good at that.
It's on Board Docs.
Yeah, oh, it's on Board Docs.
Yeah, just.
It's on Board Docs.
Uh, wait a minute, actually, it's down in the lower section, it's.
You want me to move it up?
No, they're going to have to just log into, turn off the screen, log into Google, pull it down, get it.
Sorry, I don't know how.
Go ahead and do it.
I'm new at this.
I will say, this, this is, I was really taken with this. I, I think this is really neat, that this is being done.
Great.
It's got me going through thinking, okay, so what do I have at home that, all those little tubes of toothpaste that, you know?
And as we travel and find ourselves, you know, how great to secure, fund things for, oh, look at that, and you brought brochures.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, that's very cool.
Thank you.
Just as a side note, I was down at Fairlead yesterday with Mrs. Klein, and we were, we had the Student Honors Council, that's something that they're initiating this year, where for low-level conduct infractions, the children actually come before another group of children, and they talk about what happened and, and who ultimately was consequence to ultimately require some kind of restitution for the act.
So restorative justice.
Restorative justice. And it was really, it was, I was invited to come down and kind of see that process, and it was really, it was, it was really something. I actually, right, I actually got to ask some, some questions and, and be part of that really, great learning for the, for the young man who, who had a, who had a, you know, conduct, it was off what we would have hoped. It was, it was a really great learning opportunity, and it is aligned to what's going on at a larger scale at Esperanza Middle School. We just talked to Ms. Mills today. Pirate justice, Pirate Justice League, Pirate Justice, it's, where it's the same, they're, they're currently in the process of working with the, the students themselves, who will be the, the arbiters, the jurors, the people, and, and we'll be bringing that before you, probably in December or January, once it gets up and running a little bit, and we can actually have people who are doing it talk to you specifically about it. It's very exciting. And with that, the PowerPoint's up.
Great job, Mr. Smith, filling in that time. Okay, so I'm Rebecca Klein, I'm the Academic Dean at Fairlead Academy. I'm here to talk to you about the FAST program that has recently been started. So FAST stands for Food and Supplies for Teens. So the types of things that we want to provide with the FAST program are things like hygiene products, so we're talking about toothpaste, toothbrush, deodorant, shampoo, conditioner, feminine products, those types of things. Household items, such as toilet paper, towels, washcloths, clothing basics, not clothing, but basics, such as socks, undershirts, that kind of thing. And then food, that, you know, we have the snack sacks for our little ones, that they load the kids up on the weekends, they go home with their snack sacks, so they have food for the weekend, so we can provide those types of things for our bigger students. One of the ways that this kind of came about, there were a couple of things, but last school year, I had a student who was homeless, and, you know, he had a, he had it pretty rough, but he was telling me that he would go to school, and he would shove a bunch of toilet paper in his pockets, so that he would have toilet paper at the place that he was staying. And I just thought to myself, I cannot imagine, I can't imagine having to think about while I'm in school, toilet paper at my house. I can't imagine having to, you know, being hungry at night, and, and maybe somebody will give me a dollar to get something at McDonald's. So those, you know, it just kind of struck me, and with our A&amp;S leadership, we do, we take a look at students who are in poverty, or who may be affected more by those outside stressors, and that impacts their performance in school. So, I talked to you about the, the student that kind of tugged at me, but then the other thing that, we were doing a book study in A&amp;S, Teaching with Poverty in Mind. This was last spring, and as we were reading through that, you know, I, I kind of knew some of these things, but I, I was able to put these things together. And our, one thing that we learned is that students in poverty experience a lot of stressors outside of school. I'm not talking about so much homework, I'm talking about, I don't have any toilet paper at home. You know, how can I focus on school? Or, you know, my electric, our electricity is probably going to be shut off this afternoon. Or, we've got to move this weekend, and we don't have a place to live yet. So all of these stressors, including, included in that are those, and those all impact their performance in school. Hunger, which we all know, and fortunately, many of our schools have the Maryland Meals for Achievement Program, so all students get free breakfast. Health and hygiene, you know, if I'm, if I'm sitting there and I don't have any soap at home, and I'm, you know, kind of self-conscious, that is, I'm not focusing on my teacher, I'm not focusing on what I'm supposed to learn, I'm focusing on those things. And then, of course, having your supplies for learning, your papers, your pens, your binders, all of those things. And allowing students to have these items takes away some of those stressors, so they don't have to worry about all of these things, and they can worry about school. The FAST program, the way that it works is, a student can go to their counselor, or their teacher, or whomever, and just confidentially say, hey, I need this, or I need to get some stuff from FAST. And they, it's all confidential. That process, though, has, I've already seen it, where it's allowed positive relationships from, between staff members and students to be formed. And so those students then are able to know that they can trust that staff member, that staff member gets to know a little bit more about their story, and, and builds that relationship, which can lead to other things. So it's more than just food and supplies. Like I said, students, it takes those stressors off of students, they can focus. Fewer social problems it can help with them with, because let me tell you, when a kid has issues with hygiene, they, kids will straight up tell them, you stink, or they'll get bullied, or, you know, whatever the case may be, and people don't want to be around them. So, you know, helping to, having access to the things that can alleviate those types of things. Psychologically, kids don't feel so different, because they don't have, you know, I don't have a backpack, or, or my backpack is just this little thing, and I don't have pens and pencils in class. So that can impact them that way. Physically, they're not hungry, they can learn. And then emotionally, once they have these basic needs met, and are able to focus some more on school, they start to feel some success. And it kind of opens that door for them, because they have those stressors taken off, taken off of them, don't have to worry about necessarily what they're going to eat that night, or that weekend, or their, what their siblings are going to eat, for that matter. So FAST, the way that it's funded, it originally started last spring, I did a GoFundMe account just to see, just to kind of get it jump-started. My, my original vision was to have something at Fairlead Academy. And Fairlead Academy, we have, over 60% of our students live in poverty, so, you know, we do have a lot of students who are in need of basic necessities. So I did that GoFundMe, and it raised the, I, you know, I didn't do a huge amount, I think it was like 400 something dollars. And it did reach the goal fairly quickly. From there, you know, so we started the FAST shop. Gretchen Phillips, who was at the Enterprise over the summer, had done a, an article in the Enterprise about the FAST program. And because as a result of that article, I had several very generous donations from community members. As of this time, totaling over about $2,500. I also was able to get a grant through Northrop Grumman. So that then allowed me, over the summer, to expand to all of the high schools, the tech center, all of the middle schools, and the charter school. So each of those schools have bins in their guidance offices that are available and stocked with things that they need. Teachers receive those flyers that I handed to you, so that they could post them in their classrooms, because it, if you have a program, it doesn't really matter if nobody knows about it. And as I said, students can go to their guidance counselor and just say, I need this or that. I have had staff members say to the student, hey, you need to go talk to your guidance counselor if you need this. And so teachers can advocate for that. So student IDs are taken, it is confidential, however, in order for me to collect demographic data to apply for further grants, I ask that they take the student IDs, and then also what the student needed, just so that I know kind of inventory-wise, and what the needs really are. If a student needs something that, that we don't have, then those funds allow me to purchase that for that particular student. For example, we had two kids at the, at the charter school, who both needed a trapper keeper, a zippered trapper keeper, can't just be, apparently it's very specific. So I was able to specifically get those trapper keepers for those students. So we had a student who was referred to the guidance office, he didn't have a book bag. One of the security, safety and security people at one of the high schools said, you need to go to the guidance office, to go ahead and go to the guidance office to get one. And so the guidance counselor there opened up the bin, you know, pulled out this, and she said, do, well, do you need anything else? And he said, well, I could use a toothbrush. And she said, okay. And she said, anything else? And he was like, well, it's free, you mean it's free? And she's like, yeah, it's free. And the kid was just like, wow. And so through that interaction, she then found out that there was a food shortage at home. So sent him home with some food, the father was very grateful, things are very tough at home, there's several kids at home, you know, father's on disability, that kind of thing. So there are circumstances that one safety assistant telling a kid, they do, they, you could go to the guidance office and get a book bag, that led to, you know, changing some things for the student and possibly the family. So in the future, what, I, I do plan on applying for additional grants as time goes on. I have also thought about possibly expanding to Title I elementary schools now. I might have to change the name, because they're not teenagers, at least hopefully they're not in elementary school. So I've kind of thrown that around in my mind, but I, I think that would be a good thing for some of our elementary kids, too. And like I said, I said, the Enterprise newspaper will be contacted, and actually, I've been in contact with the Enterprise as a follow-up article. And, you know, I'm just very grateful for, what I have realized is that we do really live in a great community. The donations that I've gotten for, from community members, I have no idea who they are. They, they aren't affiliated necessarily with, in any way with the school system. One lady told me, you know, my son, when he was in middle school, his best friend would come over our house, and he just, he didn't have the things that he needed, he couldn't believe people were allowed to get seconds at dinner, and, and it just, she felt it was a way that she could kind of give back to the community. I, right, just about every time I walk into this building, somebody hands me a bag of hotel shampoos and conditioners, which is awesome. Ms. Battle handed me a bag today. So, you know, there's a, there's a lot of support amongst our staff, too. I'll get random things in Metro, and I'm like, I don't know who it came from, but thank you. So, people ask, you know, what, what's, what are some ways that I can support the program? Help spread the word, is what I say. You know, if you have kids, if you know staff members, just, you know, just so people know, your hotels, shampoos, conditioners, soap, et cetera, that you don't use, it, you know, it can go a long way. And then we do accept monetary donations, which allows those supplies to be purchased that we may not have. I did speak to Mr. Springer today about possibly putting a button on the website, like the Shue Fund now has, where you can click on it and people can donate. So we're going to work on that in the near future. So that is it. Any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I did want to say, you've been doing a great word, great job at spreading the word out, because, I mean, these things are on every wall at school, and in every classroom, I always see, and I always just like, in the middle of class, just look, I'm like, there it is. But it's, it's great, because especially, like NHS and Key Club are two, like, community service organizations in school, and we always make sure, like, we have a lot of community service projects, like, activities we need them to do, but at the end of every meeting, we make sure to say, just remember, remember FAST, it's here, it's easy.
Love it.
And I think it's great, because it's not, even when you're just hungry and waiting for sixth period to come for lunch, you're, you know, you're distracted, you, and imagine if that's day-to-day, and much more drastic than just being hungry for lunch, but it's not even a matter of, you know, it is a matter of students not being able to pay attention when they are focused on something else, but it's just a matter of them feeling, you know, better at the end of the day, not necessarily because they can focus more in school, just because, I mean, all of these things that we take for granted, they, they, they're, they're comforts, they're necessities that we think, we, I mean, we're fortunate enough to have. So I think it's great that you're able to supply kids with them when they need it. And I think, especially now that I've been seeing, like, more kids benefiting from it, and the pile, more kids benefiting from it, and more kids seeing that, oh, it's, it's not that hard to just donate whatever excess things we have in, at home, the pile has been growing in our guidance office. I think it's, I think it's a, it's a great program, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
What started out in your mind as a thought or a small idea turned into something very large, and has helped an enormous amount of students? So thank you for taking, taking just something that you thought might help and, and turning it into a reality.
I think it's great, I agree. I think a lot of the focus has been on the, the younger students in the system, but the children, and, I mean, even just, even just watching and being part of the graduation ceremony at Fairlead last year, I don't think anyone understands truly some of the struggles that some of our children, or some of our students have at home. And for them to make it, you know, across the stage with all of these challenges, and if this just alleviates a little bit of the stressors that they have, I think it, it goes a long way. And I think it, some students don't feel that they have maybe role models that they care about them, and maybe in their home life, and with this program, and, you know, with the work that you're doing, and the guidance counselors, I think that, you know, that, that, that might give them, you know, a sense that someone does care for them.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you for what you are doing, and thank you, and I'm going to thank Mr. Smith for the book, Teaching with Poverty.
for the book, Teaching with Poverty in Mind. I have a copy of the book, and I am reading it, I haven't finished it yet, uh, but these things are reality. Not everybody in this county had a basic things that a lot of us take for granted, like basic toothbrush, or toothpaste, or bar soap, or deodorant, or feminine hygiene project, uh, products for girls. All of this helps a student to feel better about him or herself. It increases their self-esteem. And also, how can you be expected to achieve at your highest level when you don't even have the basic necessities of life? And housing is a whole nother issue. But the schools do a lot to provide the food, clothing, and the other things. And what you're doing, some of the schools are doing it, but in a different form, like I visited, um, Lexington Park Elementary School, they have a whole.
Closet.
Yeah, it's a room.
Yeah.
With clothes that are new, food, because I was there one holiday season, and a parent came and was taking out carts of food. And they said, she has a lot of children, she doesn't get child support from the father. So she was taking out food to feed her children over the Christmas holiday. And there are nice things in there, and it's a huge room. And, yeah, it's, a lot of schools are doing something but different. But I, I appreciate what you did. That's why reading is so powerful, it can inspire you to change, to do something, to pick up a cause, to be more sensitive to the needs of others, and that's what happened to you, although you were already sensitive, it made you decide to do something about it.
Right.
And, and, uh, I, I know this exists in my other life, I worked in social work, and the needs are tremendous for our students. You can't always tell who is in poverty by the way they look.
Yep.
This, um, really touches my heart, and I thank you, and, um, and I hope that more people will give. We do have a giving community, all we have to do is ask. We live in a great community, and people give what they can. Even if it's $5, that's what they can give, or it's $1,000, that's what they can give, but it all helps. And, um, when I go by a school, I go and look at the bags and the counselor's office to see what's there, and I thank you very much. You're a generous, compassionate, and kind person.
Thank you.
And, um, thank you for that book, it's really good.
Absolutely, thank.
And it gave examples of, yeah, how other schools adopted the principle and put it into action, so you can see an example of what they did based on the need. So, um, I appreciate it. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you.
It is wonderful. Um, you know, there, we all tend to think that, um, everything around us is, is similar, um, and it's, it's hard for people if you've not, um, been farther out into the community to really understand, even though it's a very wealthy community in, in large respect, there are, there are, um, depths of poverty that people just really can't, can't appreciate unless they experience. For, for folks who might tune into this, um, where can they drop supplies off? You know, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, with my, um, my oldest having moved out and still leaving a bunch of stuff in the closet, um, that, uh, you know, one of the things on my to-do list is to, uh, clean that closet out, and, um, and I know there are school supplies in there that have, um, likely not been used, and, and other things that.
Can find a purpose.
Yes, that, that I, and I would love to repurpose those rather than disposing of them, so.
So if people have, um, supply donations, they can drop it off at Fairlead, or if they, you know, if they call me and they want to drop it off somewhere else, and I can pick it up between whatever the case may be. Financial donations, uh, what we're doing at this point is, uh, checks are written to Fairlead Academy and in the memo FAST, and then we have a light, line item within our, um, school activities funds that FAST is dedicated to.
Might be nice if we could put a bin out here in the lobby.
Right, we have been, we have been gathering, but we haven't been doing it formally, so I see a FAST bin in the future for Mocley, and then if it works well, FAST bins for schools.
We already have FAST bins for schools.
We have FAST bins for the outgoing. FAST bins.
Oh, oh.
Donation FAST bins.
Got it.
Incoming, outgoing.
I, I'll work on that Mocley FAST bin.
All right, I like that.
Um, I mean, in all honesty, all you would probably have to do, and I'm happy to do it at least for, I mean, is hit, all of the middle schools have Facebook pages for their PTAs.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, all you have to do is just post on each of them, or contact the president and ask them to do it, and I'm sure you would have.
Be inundated.
Right.
Facebook for good things.
Right. So, I mean, that's, it'd be very quick.
Yeah.
So.
Especially in this season.
Might also, you know, be a wonderful scouting project for someone.
Mm-hmm. We're currently, we're.
And I think it's, I think it's important for you to have a list of what you accept and what you do not accept.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we want nice things for people.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want anything that is damaged, has stains. We want things that are nice and well-maintained.
Right.
Um, and not to assume somebody wants it, to me, well, if somebody's poor, they should be glad to have it, it's a coat, and I don't agree that way.
You know what, open soap.
No, don't.
Yeah, right.
Or it says, or, no, we don't.
Please, not your used deodorant.
Okay, you know what I mean. Or use toothbrush, no way.
I never say that.
Let's just not go down that road any further.
See, that's what happens when we go late into the evening. Anyway, thank you.
Very much so. All right, this is, this is wonderful, and I, I applaud you for what you're doing, so thank you.
Okay.
So on our system webpage, you see the logo of the school system, and then underneath it, it comes up, and it says, uh, Commitment in Action. And so what you have before you is the embodiment of commitment in action. She is the purposeful pebble, and you throw her in a pond, and where the ripples will reach? We can't tell today.
Mr. Smith, I'm a rock.
That's right.
I got a rock.
Not a pebble.
You are the rock. Very nice, thank you, thank you for the presentation, Rebecca, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, what else?
All right, next board meeting, Wednesday, November 9th, 9 o'clock in the morning. And with that, we are.
My anniversary!
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Happy anniversary.
Congratulations.